Everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of Sylvan City Council for April 3, 2023 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow and Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
So Ms. Dow is excused. If you happen to be watching, Mayor and Ms. Dow, thanks for attending. If not, when you're looking at this later, my name is Mark Frye and as President of Council, obviously they know that, as President of Council, when Mayor's not here, I end up being Acting Mayor. So with that, we do have a quorum with the six members of Council in attendance. And as I understand from talking to Mrs. Brining, in this particular regard, I also vote-
That's correct, yes.
-as said as Acting Mayor, correct?
Correct.
So just as a clarification for the record. And with that, if we could do the Pledge of Allegiance, proceeding by Mr. Hanson.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those as well who are guests here in the chamber this evening and for those of you who are looking at this online. There is one addition to the agenda. As I'm not able to be the President of Council and the Acting Mayor at the same time, so I'd like to add item 3A, which is nomination of an Acting President Pro Tem of Council for this evening. Are there, members of Council, are there other items that need to be added to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Frye.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Frye.
Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Frye.
Mr. Schreuer?
Nothing, Mr. Frye.
Mrs. Brining?
Nothing, Mr. Frye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to the adoption of a nomination of an Acting President Pro Tem. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor or Mr. Frye?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would move that we designate Mary Westfall as President Pro Tem this evening.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Hanam, a second from Mr. McCann, I think got in under the wire from Mr. Hanson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Mrs. Westfall, congratulations as President Pro Tem of Council for this evening. With that, I will ask you to bring Council minutes from the meeting of March 20 to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. I move approval of the Sylvan City Council meeting minutes from the meeting held March 20, 2023 as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second to approve Council minutes of March 20, 2023 as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item up is Agenda Item 5A, which is a discussion about the Brent and Haroon application for C-MAC funding. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Frye. In 2019, Council authorized a study to be done by DGL Consulting Engineers on basically the triangle, if you will, at Brent, Haroon, Holland, Sylvan. And some projects have been recommended in that corridor that we've already moved forward on. Well, yeah, I said the triangle, but it really extended the full length of Haroon Road. And we have installed the pedestrian hybrid beacon that's in place at the River Trail, and we're currently in design with the, for the installation of a traffic signal and actually relocation of the drive into Flower Hospital. Another project that was proposed in that study was a roundabout, excuse me, at Brent and Haroon. And with C-MAC funding applications coming up, the official date hasn't been announced, but we're anticipating those sometime in September. We would like to take that study a little bit further. In 2019, the traffic counts that were done at that time would not be eligible. We'd have to have updated traffic counts for that intersection to be able to submit an application. And then also, they would get a preliminary design put together with an estimate that we could submit for grant funds as part of that C-MAC process. That intersection did serve, the level of service was quite low, both in the eastbound directions in the morning. It's a level of service E and then a level of service, excuse, level of service E during the PM peak, a level of service F during the AM peak. And just like high school and college, Es and Fs are not good. And it's, F is as bad as it gets. They have submitted a proposal to us in the amount of $8,000 to complete those services that I just talked about. And we, it would propose that we move forward with that using the capital improvement funds, the 401 account. And we recommend moving forward with DGL for the study and update.
Questions for Mr. Aller? Hearing none. Then Mr. Richardson, Ordinance Number 36, 2023?
Thank you, Mr. Frye. I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number 36, 2023, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide professional engineering services for the Brent Road-Haroon Road intersection congestion mitigation and air quality grant application assistance, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $8,000, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 36, 2023 as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, the proposed resolution for number 3-2023. Mrs. Brining, Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Frye. I am going to suggest that we refer this back to the Employee and Community Relations Committee. You will recall that this was some legislation that had been hanging in the balance since 2017, and we weren't clear about why. However, it has been brought to my attention, Heritage Sylvan, represented here as historical village, however, they're now Heritage Sylvan, has a different board structure that doesn't fall in line cleanly with this policy. And I feel like there needs to be further discussion among the Employment Community Relations Committee to make sure we're clear on how we want to handle that and what that recommendation should be. So with that, Mr. Frye, my interest tonight is refer this back to the Employment Community Relations Committee. So I would make that as a motion. And then if possible, I'd like to set the date.
Second. I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion from Mrs. Westfall, a second from Mr. Richardson, to refer Resolution Number 3-2023 back to the Employee and Community Relations Committee for additional consideration and discussion and potential modification. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and Resolution Number 3 is referred back to Employee and Community Relations. Now, Mrs. Westfall, you said you wanted to set a potential committee meeting.
I would like to do that if I could. There is no rush on this or sense of urgency. It's been kind of wandering around for a while. And I've just learned, of course, that Mr. Richardson has a few commitments. And you said you were not available March or May 1st.
The next one I'd be available will be the mid-May meeting.
And I believe I will be here, but am coming in from out of the country that day and would rather not schedule it for that evening. So I'd like to look at that first meeting in June, if people are available, Monday, June 5. Is that an option? I don't think it'll be a long conversation. Seven o'clock, I think, would be fine. Do it right before Council. Okay. Thank you very much. So I make a motion that the Employment Community Relations Committee convene on Monday, June 5 at 6:30, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers for further review and discussion of proposed Resolution Number 3-2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to schedule an Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting for 7:00 PM on June the-
6th.
6th?
5th.
I'm sorry.
Or 5th, excuse me, 5th in council chambers. Any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and the clerk would please post that meeting for a couple of months hence. Great. We're up to Agenda Item 7, which is the two committee meetings. First was the Committee of the Whole. And since I was the person chairing that meeting, I'll provide that report. So the Committee of the Whole started at 6:00 this evening, discussion generally about an update on the, on the potential bridge deck replacement for US 23 on Monroe Street Bridge Deck Replacement. Members of Council in attendance, for myself, Mr. Frye, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hanam, Mr. McCann, Mr. Richardson, and Mrs. Westfall. Others present, administration, Mrs. Brining, Chief Miller, Mr. Shaw, Mrs. Bigelow, Mr. Sanford, Mr. Aller. Generally, the subject matter was, was a general discussion about the potential bridge deck replacement. Mr. Aller provided some, some general information and, and some general timing. He discussed the possibility of, of creating some additional green space for the city. Mr. Shaw went into much more detail up on the board, showing, showing a lot of pictures, discussed the possibility of having some pocket parks, I think was the terminology being used, on the east side of the bridge. There's going to be a 14-foot path currently anticipated for bikers and walkers on the north side of the bridge in order to make those paths as safe as possible. The deck, the bridge deck is actually going to be raised according to ODOT current plans, and, and we're working on a process. This is an ODOT project, not a City of Sylvan project. So this is one that they have control on. And the public meeting to discuss the, getting the public's input is May the what, Kevin?
8th.
May the 9th. So with that, there was some other information discussed about the possibility of, of any budget overruns and how that's going to be handled, and that's still up in the air at this point. It's important to point out as part of this, that the stuff on the bridge deck is part of this contract, the stuff that is east and west of the bridge deck, the decorative parts, would be, would be on the city's, on the city's dime in that regard. So with that, I had a motion to adjourn for Mrs. Westfall, a second for Mr. Richardson, and we adjourned at 6:45 PM. Anything that I missed? Trying to summarize as much as possible. Okay. Moving on, the Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:48. In attendance were myself, Mr. Frye, Mrs. Westfall, Mr. Hanam, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Hanson, Mr. McCann, as members of Council. Others present were Mrs. Brining, Mr. Shaw, Mrs. Bigelow, Mr. Sanford, Mr. Schreuer, and Mr. Aller from the administrative staff, and a couple members from the audience were here to participate. So meeting was opened to discuss generally the Attorney, the potential Attorney General Agreement for tax collections of delinquent income taxes for the City of Sylvan. Mr. Schreuer described the program. This is something that's been out there for quite some period of time. The top 50 taxpayers that are delinquent owe us, owe us about $400,000 total for all the taxpayers, 1,300 or so. It's about $1.1 million. So after discussion, basically, we decided to ask the administrative staff to revise the ordinance, because this is a relatively old ordinance from 2019, so, and ask the administration to bring back for our consideration in a future council meeting, a revised ordinance for 2023. We also had some discussions about the administration not submitting delinquent amounts, less than $1,000, back to, to the Attorney General for their, for their potential collections. And that was something that we're comfortable, we were, as council, were comfortable with allowing the administration just to handle that without being written into the legislation. So I made that motion to ask the administration to make that, make that, that ordinance come before us in the future. Mr. Hanam had a second. Motion carried unanimously. Second item that was under discussion was the potential of modifying what is now a policy for, and creating a civil penalty rather than a criminal penalty for residential renters, people that own apartment buildings and the like, and rent to another citizen. They're supposed to report to us. And Mrs. Brining had brought forward the possibility of putting that obligation onto commercial renters, building owners as well. And after some research by the administration, we saw that, that the City of Dublin was actually getting similar results with, with a civil penalty rather than a criminal penalty. So we made a recommendation, asked the administration to modify the ordinance for both the residences and the commercial property owners for being obligated to provide us notice semi-annually to let us know who is occupying their particular spaces. That motion was for Mr. Hanam, the second by Mrs. Westfall, and the motion carried unanimously. At that point, we had some additional conversation about bringing in, for a future Finance Committee meeting, a series of investment firms that we use for investing the city's money based on state law and an investment policy. And as part of that conversation, we asked Mr. Schreuer to reach out to, to those, those entities, which are a couple of firms here, here in town, Savage Investments, UBS, and Fifth Third Securities, is that correct?
Correct.
Were the three firms we primarily, we use for that, that particular purpose and have them come in and, and educate us on what's going on with everything happening in the banking industry and how that is being handled by those firms. So with that, the discussion that we had in that regard was to set a meeting for the first meeting in May. And I believe we're going to try to set that at 6:30 PM. That first meeting would be on May the 1st. So I'll make a motion to set a Finance Committee meeting at, at 6:30, starting at 6:30 PM in council chambers, for the purpose of discussing information from, from our various investment firms, not for the purpose of changing who, who those investment firms are or reallocating the money, but providing information to council and the wider community. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and the clerk will set, will notify the public that we're going to have a Finance Committee meeting at 6:30 on May the 1st before council here in council chambers. With that, we had a motion to adjourn from Mrs. Westfall. Mr. Richardson seconded, and we adjourned at 7:25 PM. Anything to add from members of the council on that? Great. Are there any committee referrals to come before council this evening? Hearing none. Is there any, any other items to come before council? I know we have some downtown banners, some interesting pictures.
I'm curious if anybody knows, it seems like a lot of banners here, which is wonderful. They're all very fun. Do we know how frequently they're planning to change the banners? Is there?
Mr. Sanford, come on up. Let them inform us.
Sure. Just the, this is the work of the new banner committee that you put together. This is the latest. I just got it last week, and I thought you'd want to see what they're working on. There were, the artwork was provided by the Hudson Gallery and the Fuller Art Studio. And then with identifying the different events that are coming up, and so it'd be two-sided with the artwork on one, dates on the other.
Dates on the other.
And then that'll be repeated. I think there's 106 banners in the series. Want to, you know, call out Mr. Hanson, who already found a typo on one of the banners. We got that corrected already, so thank you, Mr. Hanson, for that. And, and we've got a sponsorship that Tiffany at the chamber helped get with the Scott Quality Concrete is the sponsor of this first set of banners.
Great. Any other questions? Couple of minor comments. First, we could send a letter, if we haven't already done so, to Scott's Quality Concrete, thanking them for, for their support, community support, and also to Hudson Art Gallery and Fuller Art Gallery for, for the artwork as well. That, that's phenomenal. I think it'll help dress the community up in a wonderful way.
I will do so. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Last, obviously, we all are well aware at this point that we have some road construction going on on Monroe Street. And last week, as we all know, was pretty sedate, but at the same time, it was spring break last week for Sylvan schools. So with that, I'd like to ask Chief Miller to provide us a brief update as to how things went today, since today is Monday, the first day back from spring break for the students.
We survived.
That's good news.
That's a good thing. No accidents around school. Everyone seemed to be well receptive. The information that was put out over the past several months had obviously been read. They had a good understanding of what was going on. A lot of thank yous for the officers being there, a lot of patience being shown. We had a few that weren't so patient. They got a visit from an officer spoke with. But no, we couldn't ask for anything better from the community and the school as a whole. Everyone was, was very pleased with day one and were hoping it just gets better as we go into day two, three, and four. So this week, we're planning on having plenty of officers there so that we can adapt. We're getting a better handle on what times people are showing up, so that we're making sure that we're utilizing our personnel where they need to be and when they need to be there.
Great.
Any questions?
Was there a peak time? Is there a real busy, like a window that's like really crazy?
Yesterday, this morning, we got there, I got there at 6:30 in the morning, and actually, I think the big rush started about 7:20, which is kind of what we did. We hope people don't show up at the last minute and-
Yeah. 10 minutes before school starts.
Quite a few that showed up, 10 minutes, and then they just can't stand there going, what do you mean I can't go anywhere? If you can only move you as fast as we can move you. And then in the afternoon, actually, I was very impressed with the afternoon traffic. We were able to empty and get most everyone off of silica within 20 minutes of school letting go. So speaks to volumes to how the city worked together with the street department and school system and the officers to make that.
That's great. I've waited on silica trying, somebody trying to turn left in front of me for 10 minutes, but just right behind them. So that's pretty good. That's hundreds of cars. That's great.
The problem is turning off of traffic in the side streets. As much as we can, we just try to flush the traffic. We had a little backup on Main Street this afternoon, about the time St. Jones let out, because we were still in the process of getting a lot of traffic out of Main Street. But this is what it is with all the construction going on. Takes a little time to get, for pointing the point being out.
And I understand that you even drafted Mr. Aller to assist in this regard, correct?
Yes.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Aller.
Everyone from the half deck-
Oh, hands on deck.
-are helping out.
That, I think it's great. I'm glad to hear that it went smoothly. Obviously, providing information as far in the, in, you know, out, that helps, give people time, you know, to redesign and get more comfortable with, hey, this is happening. And I know that there was a lot of communication with the school district and, and the like, and that probably helped smooth things over, so.
And they were a huge help today. The principal was out there helping, director and they pegged the parking lot to keep things moving, so.
Yeah, I'd have been a lot more, back in the day, I would have been a lot more concerned about the principal than I would about the police. So I understand. Well, you know, thanks, please extend our thanks to the, to the school district for their assistance, obviously, to you and the officers and all the people that prepped for this, because it could have been a traffic snarl and a hurry. Had it, I'm glad to hear it didn't go that way.
This is our practice for the day 23 interchange.
I'm thinking that one will be a little more severe.
I'm thinking positive. We can do this one, we can do that one.
No question about it. I'm sure we can handle it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Frye?
Mr. McCann?
I'd just like to ask possibly if we could get interval updates regarding the construction-
I'd just like to ask possibly if we could get interval updates regarding the construction, any unforeseen, any items that should be brought on the schedule to see if we're on target, so we can have regular communication to the public for how the construction's going.
Sure. Yeah. The first, the first few days last week went very smooth. If you, if you look over, they may have started hauling some of it off, but if you look over there and see a pile on the north side of the bridge, you'll see that it's, it's pretty, it's broken up pretty good. There aren't many big chunks. Typically, when you take a bridge apart, it's concrete and it comes out in big chunks. There aren't any chunks. When there aren't any chunks, that's a sign that it's time to, it was a good time to replace that bridge. So it was, it was time, 1938 to now, so. But yeah, the first week, it went very smooth construction-wise, and they moved pretty good with demolitions, so. Big thing will be, you know, now, once they start reconstructing that bridge, does Mother Nature cooperate with the rains? Yeah.
But you've got some days built in for that kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, we, we always have weather days built in. It's just Mother Nature has her own mind on how many weather days she's actually going to have, so. But yeah, the first week went fantastic, so.
Good to hear. Thank you.
So let's hope that the next bridge that's being put there now is going to last us a good 85 years as well, because that's a long time.
Yes, it is.
Served as well. Anything else to come before council? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and the council will return and have our second meeting in April, on April 17, two weeks hence. Look forward to seeing you all then.